Of the Groton Town Council, if I could ask that everybody would just silence their devices at this point, please. They get picked, it gets picked up on the microphones and it's a little distracting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
So, is your president, you have a full quorum.
Thank you. If we could please stand to salute the flag. Would Chief Winzke please lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. Okay. We're onto item, Roman numeral three, recognition, awards, and memorials. And I don't believe we have any recognitions, awards, and memorials at this point. So, what we will be doing now is recessing the town council and beginning 2018-006 to a public hearing on illicit stormwater discharge ordinance. Madam Clerk?
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the town council on April 3rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Community Room 1 at the Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, on the illicit stormwater discharge ordinance under the authority of Chapter 98 of the Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-148, in order to implement the general permit for the discharge of stormwater from a small municipal separate storm sewage system permit used by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environment Protection. The full text of this proposed ordinance was on file and still is in the town clerk's office and on the town website. And the town website address is www.groton-ct.gov. And this was dated on the 27th of March and it ran in the New London Day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will take any citizens' comments on the public hearing for the stormwater discharge ordinance. And I don't believe there are any citizens signed up to speak. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
There was no one signed up, but I heard someone from the audience say that they wanted to speak.
Certainly. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Gretchen Chiferini, 87, Phoenix Drive. And I just want to comment, I'm opposed to any more regulations such as this illicit stormwater discharge ordinance. Stormwater drainage is the least of our problem and has never been an issue for decades. It's another boondoggle to engrown government. I understand, I read that you're going to hire somebody, I don't even understand that, to look over this. And it does nothing to structurally fix our serious problems. Legislation such as this is viewed as a horrible thing by developers, another obstacle, another hoop they have to jump through. And so it discourages investment in our town. And we should be focusing on what citizens care about, which is the economy, taxes, and jobs. This has got nothing to do with really any of those. In fact, as I just said, it discourages all of those. So, I want to stop, try to stop this town forever being distracted by such costly, onerous, and do-nothing nonsense. We're doing this at state level, federal level, trying to get rid of regulation, and Groton looks to add more regulation for something that's never been perceived as a problem. So, please, let's not add more. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens who wish to speak at the hearing on the discharge Seeing none, I will adjourn the public hearing. We're onto item four on page nine of your agenda, if you're following along on the agenda. This is receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the town council meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the lectern and state their names and addresses for the record. The town manager wanted to have a moment before the petitions begin, please.
And, good evening, everyone. Please bear with me, I took a day quill instead of a night quill, or night quill instead of a day quill, and man, it really just hit me. I'd like to make a request to the council concerning item 2018-0078, position changes. While I think the positions warrant a pay increase, I think it causes other issues to do so when not following the authorized process. I'm requesting the council consider an alternative resolution that I distributed. So, you should all have that, and it should be out in the audience, too.
Thank you. All right, so...
And I should probably clarify that that would remove consideration of the economic development changes.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me? Yes, that's the pay raises. All right, so first on the list we have, I believe it's either Eve Palmer or Sue Palmer, I'm sorry. I'm sorry? Sue Palmer, followed by Catherine Hoffman.
I wrote this before I saw the amended, whatever it says, amended resolution.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sue Palmer, 35 Sandra Drive, Westerly, Rhode Island. I've worked with the town of Groton for 32 years. Sorry, Sean. I'm here tonight on behalf of the retirees of the Groton Municipal Employees Association, CILU Local 62. These retirees include the librarians, financial assistants, engineers, inspectors, office assistants, social workers, and other employees who got their job done every day for the length of their career. In November of 2017, before all of you were seated, we came before the council and asked for a 2% increase for our retirees. Our retirees have not received a cost of living increase since 2008. Per our contract, and that of the non-union police, ASME, and the steelworkers, town of Groton retirees are allowed to request a review of benefits once they have been retired for over five years. A COLA increase was given to the non-union supervisory section of the police last year. As of this date, we have not received an answer from either the town or the town council regarding our request. An article published in the day, in January 2018, stated that, per the Human Resource Department, the average retirement benefits for the town is $35,000. I'm here before you with figures provided by the HR department that GMEA retirees eligible for a cost of living increase, average pension is only $17,115.83. A 2% COLA increase for these 48 eligible retirees would cost a total of $16,431.21. This figure breaks down to an average of $342.32 per retiree per year, or $28.52 a month for these retirees. That's correct. Our request is equal to $28.52 per eligible retiree per month. Imagine how disheartening it was to see the town's agenda and its resolution for substantial pay increases for the town manager, the HR director, and three OPDS personnel. The new town manager's pay is already $10,000 over the previous town manager and is proposed to increase $13,000. Once again, I wrote this before this was all done. I understand that Mr. Burt rescinded his request, however, the resolution is still on the agenda, or was, for the increase. With the proposed 2% pay raise scheduled to take an effect of 7/1/18, the HR director's pay will have increased a total of $16,740 since July of 2017. The three OPDS salaries will have increased $32,000 also since July of 2017. If the council can find tens of thousands of dollars of extra money in the budget for five people, surely it can find $16,432.20 to increase retirement for 48 GMEA retirees. These dedicated, longtime employees deserve your consideration. Thank you for your time. Respectfully submitted, Sue Palmer.
If you have copies of that, thank you very much. Catherine Hoffman, followed by Donna Dusso.
My name is Catherine Hoffman. I live at 21 Indigo Street here in Mystic, Connecticut, on the Groton side of the river. I am an employee of the town of Groton. I have worked for the town since 1991, and I, too, work for the GMEA Union. When I started and through my tenure here, we averaged about 100 employees with the GMEA Union. We are down to 77. That means these positions have been lost and cut to budget. We've not decreased the amount of work. We've asked the employees to pick up the extra work of the missing employees. We've had GMEA members who have been offered positions outside of the union to protect particular individuals from being bumped when there are budget cuts and position cuts. And not only are these individuals removed from their GMEA position, they are also given increases in salary in these non-union positions. When we started negotiations with the town, we were offered, as a GMEA Union, a half a percent, because that's all the town could afford to give us. Listening to our retiree numbers, we don't make much money. But we negotiated and settled on a 2% increase for our union. Another union after us, who has a higher salary wage, actually settled and got 3% on their increases. So, it's always a wonder to the GMEA members as to how the town seems to find money for people who are already making the higher wage, but can't find it for the support staff that is left behind. We have, our HR department is very busy. We've come up with, here in the town, that you can't just stop in to visit, that you have to make an appointment because you're really busy. And with the new position being created, that's going to leave less time for HR to take care of what they are already busy doing. And as a union, sometimes when we ask for calculations, it takes a while for the information to be processed because of the workload in HR. There have been issues over the years where there's been mixed up in income tax, we've had retirement calculations that had to be done and redone. So, the question is, with what's being proposed and taking on the Department of Human Resources plus an assistant town manager, how is HR going to function for the employees and for the workers and the people of the town of Groton? So, those are our concerns. But again, the big one is, it seems when we need money, we can find money, and when the people who are the support staff ask, there is just none to be had. Thank you.
Donna Dusso, followed by Douglas Hoffman.
My name is Donna Dusso, and I'm the current president of the Groton Animal Foundation.
Could you please state your name and address?
Donna Dusso, 974 Route 163, Oakdale, Connecticut.
Thank you.
I'm the current president of the Groton Animal Foundation, and tonight I would like to take the opportunity to introduce ourselves to the current council and share some information with you. We are registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit and have been in existence for over 10 years. Our primary mission is to subsidize medical care for animals in need located within the town of Groton, city of Groton, Groton Long Point, and the U.S. Naval Submarine Base. These animals include all that are housed at the Groton Animal Control Facility and also privately owned animals whose owners are in need and reach out to us for financial assistance. In the last four years, we funded over $80,000 in medical care. $43,000 of that was for the town of Groton Animals. And we just wanted to take this opportunity to update the council on what we've been up to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Douglas Hoffman, followed by Roseanne Katusky.
Douglas Hoffman, 21 Indigo Street, Mystic, Connecticut. I'm here, I'm a retired police officer after 27 and a half years, I'm very proud of that, working here at the Town of Groton Police Department. I'm here as a taxpayer, I live in town, and most of my career was spent in this town. Initially coming here was because of the pay increases that I saw that were going to be happening. I was privileged in my job as a police officer, I was very fortunate to work some special, a lot of special assignments. A lot of them involved relationships with our community and our residents. And over the years, I've watched things get cut because there was no money. Great programs that kept kids involved in their community, kept the roads safe through enforcement, and all these things, special service things, got cut. And it bothered me, and I'm glad, Mr. Burt, thank you, I appreciate your amendment that those are gone. But it bothers me that a few people are going to get a lot of pay raises, and yet there's a lot of good that that money can do for this town, this community, and our kids. These people, these, I don't begrudge them any pay increases, however, it's a lot of money when other things in this town need attention. You need to have, and you've got a lot of people still trying to do good works with far less than they ever had. And they're probably spending their own money to try to do that. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Roseanne Katusky, followed by Chris Regan.
Roseanne Katusky, 24 Anne Avenue, Mystic. Tonight I want to talk about the raises in the planning department. The town council should not support increasing the salaries of the Director of Planning, Assistant Director of Planning, and Economic Development Coordinator any more than the generous raises they are already receiving from the taxpayers in the 2019 budget. In the 2019 budget, the Director of Planning will make $112,506, the Assistant Director of Planning $96,022, and the Economic Development Coordinator $94,139, which is $2,206,1845, respectively, in raises for just one year. These are very generous raises, especially considering that the taxpayers had an 8.7% increase last year. Hopefully, things are looking better for the taxpayers for 2019. How many of you, or how many Groton taxpayers, will receive huge raises like this? None that I know of. If the Planner, Assistant Planner, and Economic Development Coordinator would be happier and make more money somewhere else and want to leave, so be it. As a point of reference, there is a Director of Planning position advertised recently in the paper in a surrounding town with pay scale of $70,000 to $80,000, and our assistant makes $96,000. The salaries in Groton are the highest in the area, everyone knows it. Another point, I am sure that giving these three people raises above the 2% or 3% that I just heard about tonight, that other town employees will receive, will definitely have a negative impact on employee morale. Previous town councils and the taxpayers have added quite a lot of money to the planning department over the past several years, hoping for economic development to lower the tax rate. So far, we have lots of interesting ideas and looking forward to actual measurable results. The town of Groton employees enjoy salaries and benefits unheard of by the taxpayers who are paying for them. Since these three planning department individuals are scheduled to receive a significant raise already, please do not support additional raises for them. If they choose to leave, so be it. Respectfully submitted, Roseanne Katusky. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Regan, followed by Westerly A. Donahue.
Chris Regan, 20 Findlay Way, Stonington, Connecticut. First off, when I first heard about the raises, I was shocked, absolutely shocked. I was pleasantly surprised that John basically said, "I'll forgive the raise, I commend you for it." And regards to economic development, I think you guys should not just go based on raises, you should go based on bonuses of what happens to the grand list. We're stagnant with the grand list. When we see performance where it's going up, that's when you should give a one-time bonus for that year. And if they're not performing, they're not doing their job, or if they have a high salary, where's the incentive for them to produce something better for Groton, other than collecting their paycheck and then going somewhere else, not living in our town? And that's a big concern for me. Because in regards to it, we live in this area, and we live and breathe everything that happens in this area. And we need to have people to have a vested interest in our town. I, you know, I just had a meeting with the Commissioner of the State DOT today, pushing the train stop in Groton. I'm doing it. Economics not doing it, I am. I'm the one that's talking about it, trying to get it to come to Groton, to spur the economic development. So, these are the things that they need to push, based on the study that was done, four times that the council, over 55 years, have paid for. The number one thing is a train stop in Groton, the biggest population in the London County. How do we not have a train stop? Blows my mind. But, you get a train stop, it's going to spur the economic development. The TIF is definitely going to help, and I commend the planning staff for getting the TIF across the finish line, because that's going to change Groton. And I think hopefully in the three or four years from now, we're going to see a whole different dynamic for Groton. I think it's going to change where we're going, but I don't think you pay based on what's potential. It's when they get it across the finish line with development, anybody can have a meeting with a developer. I have it all the time. But if they don't want to produce or put up the money in our community, all it is is just a bunch of talk. So, at the end of the day, I think if you do a performance-based bonus, period. It's like Stonington, they're up 4.6% on the grand list. We're stagnant in Groton. And are they really, really connected to what we have in Groton? And that's the one thing I question. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Westerly A. Donahue, followed by Ron Yuha.
My name is Westerly A. Donahue, and I live at 511 High Street in Mystic. I've been following these sudden developments within the council, the town council, and it's really unsettled me. Unfortunately, I don't have written comments. But I would like to say that it happened so suddenly in executive session. There are only unlimited types of personnel matters which can be discussed in executive session, and any which are subject to attorney-client privilege are not allowed. So, I don't know how the council has gotten so much information about Mr. Burt being allowed to hire or change a position or create a new position on his own without having, anyone having consulted the town lawyer or some lawyer. Just as I am dubious that Mr. Burt could have sought changing his contract or extending his contract without the advice of an attorney, in which case, that discussion would never have been appropriate in an executive session. And I think the number of personnel items that are addressed in executive session should be very, very limited, because we need more transparency in local government, not the opposite. It also disturbs me that Mr. Burt is in need of his own staff. If he had gone to Urbana, Illinois, he would have shared the town supervisor's job, the executive assistant to the mayor. He wouldn't have had a personnel expert, who then becomes a fast-track town manager, and others who've now been removed from the equation, on the basis, on the claim of, the basis of the claim of economic development, which I have seen none of in Groton. And I understand that Mr. Burt has said that, you know, we're poised just on the brink of this great economic development. But what, what is it? Perhaps Mr. Burt can enlighten us as to what these tantalizing prospects are, because I'm not aware of any. And it bothers me, too, that a new position would not be advertised and open to the publics, that applicants could apply for this position in an open way, but that it's already been dedicated to somebody who, as far as I know, has no special background in town management. Personnel is quite a different function, management function, from town management function. And I don't see how he suddenly is being given this salary raise to develop in this regard, you know, being paid while you're learning a job. And then who, how would the personnel function be handled? Because he would be too busy working for Mr. Burt to remain...
You have one minute.
To remain a personnel manager to all and have this other job at the same time. And I think it reflects negatively on Mr. Burt, that he's so in need of this type of functionary, and yet he still wants to have his contract changed, to have it extended for one year. So, this is very dissatisfying. Last, I would say that I am the lady on High Street who was persecuted by neighbors, and police officers unfortunately were brought in, were proxies, and Mr. Burt himself, who instead of calling the Roads Department, the Public Works Department, called the police, had me removed from a perfectly legal parking space...
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you very much. Ron Yuha, followed by Wendy Yuha.
Right. If he had just, excuse me, let me add one thing. If he had just consulted the Public Works letter of August 29th, 2017, he would have seen the reason that I would be allowed to park on the dual-purpose surface.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you very much.
I think you should be more considerate to your handicapped members of your community as I am.
Ron Yuha, followed by Wendy Yuha. Thank you.
Ron Yuha, 91 South Road, Groton. And I'm also the president of the Quantico Bridge Fire District. Man, this is a great meeting. When the town manager was leaving, we had one person show up. Now that we have some problems, they're all here, and I don't only have to talk about half of the concerns that I have. I appreciate you letting me speak. The pay increases were out of line. I know this council, there's justification for maybe some of the stuff that was going to be in that charter before that was, maybe this council should be a four-year term with split two-year, because the council's new, John's new town manager, and maybe we ought to, even if, you know, like they wanted the RTM to be gone, and a finance board come in, maybe there ought to be a finance board to look at this stuff and to help the council, not to make the rules, but to help the council and the town manager. Seeing the other raises are gone, the only thing I can say about that is, all these positions were reclassified in July. So, last year, these people got a raise, and then the Attorney's Office was asked to do a survey to find out where our pay scale is. And these positions were adjusted. So, they got a raise, and then they got their pay scale adjusted on some of these non-union positions. Because, and when you look at the pay scale of other assistant town managers, planning, in relation to the rest of the state, now that they've been adjusted, we're up there. You know, they're getting plenty of money. And again, like everybody said, if you don't want to be here, and you don't want to do your job, you can leave. Now, I don't know if this council is in pursuit of an assistant town manager, which probably, as was spoken before me, shouldn't have been talked about in executive session or any of the other raises, and I don't know if that's what happened or not, and I don't really care because they're gone. But are you in need of an assistant town manager to help John, or because your fear is that he might leave again? Now... is that he might leave again? Or be looking to leave? I like John, I've interacted with him, he's been fine. If the HR director is so busy that he can't do his job, and I think if you look through the budget, you'll find that all the big increases are in HR, not his fault, but, you know, negotiations aren't going to go well if somebody gets a raise for $10,000, et cetera. Now, as far as hiring him at the pay scale of an assistant town manager, if you go to the Terms and Conditions of Employment for Non-Union Employees effective July 1, 2006, it states that he will be a 4%, it would be a 4% raise, or he would move to the next pay scale.
You have one minute, sir.
At the bottom of the pay scale, which is, the bottom of the pay scale now for an assistant town manager is $101,000. So if he wants to be at the assistant town manager's pay scale, that should be at $101,000. So I strongly advise this council, if he, seeing that we have an assistant to the town manager, that we gave a $10,000 increase last year, because Mark suggested that it would be good so that he would help John through these tough times, the councils, if they want a town manager, assistant town manager, they should eliminate the assistant to the town manager, which is $75,000 a year, take these raises that they were all going to squeeze into the budget, and put the assistant town manager job out.
Your time is up, sir.
Can I be granted some time by my wife? Her five minutes?
Perhaps she could finish your comments.
No. Can I have two more minutes?
I just, I had to cut short the other lady, but if your wife would like to yield her time, a portion of her time, that's acceptable, sir. It's not allowed. I'm sorry. The council is objecting to that, I apologize.
Alan Ackley, 99 North Road.
Ms. Yuha is next on the list, please. Wendy Yuha, and then Alan Ackley. I was just informed by the Rules Chair that that is not acceptable, so I apologize. If you have written comments, Mr. Yuha, we'd be happy to take them into the record, and we could read them later.
Well, if the council would like some information on all of the past history of the raises, and the other thing is, and I'm not positive, I'm not sure that this candidate meets the qualifications for assistant town manager, which calls for a master's degree.
Wendy Yuha, then Alan Ackley. You're welcome to leave any written comments with the clerk, please, and we could take a look at them after the meeting, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. I don't know how to say your last name, and the council, thank you for allowing me the minutes to speak. I'm not going to take five minutes. I have lived in Groton all of my life. I've lived in Biquanik Bridge, and low-income. And when I read the article in the paper, I was angry and offended that somebody who just started July 2017 was going to be giving a $13,000 raise. What has he done for $13,000? I don't get it. If he wants to leave the town, leave, okay? Because he is obviously not invested in Groton. I am invested in Groton. I have lived here. The people in this audience are invested in Groton, but I don't think that the manager is. And as far as the HR director being given the assistant manager job, he has a bachelor's degree, okay? We need people that have college educations more than, let's talk about masters or higher. A bachelor's degree? I don't get it. I'm asking you to please hold on your decision and talk to the residents of Groton and think about what is going on. There are no millennials in this audience today, because they're leaving Connecticut, because we can't afford raises for white-collar people. It's the blue-collar people in this town that do everything. I have a brother-in-law that works down at the sewer plant, and he says his salary compared to salaries in the city of Groton and other towns are like $7 different, and he hasn't gotten a raise in years, not a cost-of-living raise. What about our blue-collar employees that don't sit behind a desk and push a pencil every day? I'm a nurse, I work hard for my money. My husband is a machinist, he works hard for his money, okay? I'm invested in Groton, and I know that you all are, too, and I really appreciate you allowing me my five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Ackley, followed by Gretchen Chipporini.
Mayor, I have no further comment than what's already been said.
Could you please come to the podium, state your name and address, sir? It's for the public record. Thank you.
Alan Ackley, 99 North Road. I was going to offer up my time to Ron Yuha, because he had a good amount of things that he needed to say, but if the rules is such that I can't give him that time, then I have no further comment than what's already been said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gretchen Chipporini, 87, Phoenix Drive, Groton. And I'm going to, I agree with much that has been said, but I'm going to go on the assumption that these raises are still there, because I still think it's in the mind of upper management to do something. Quote, "Positive economic development momentum we are starting to experience," unquote, a statement recently made to the Daily Newspaper by our leadership to support giving our economic development people a substantial raise. As a lifetime commercial property owner, real estate professional, resident of Groton, I don't see it. Only an amateur would toot their horn before anything happens. In the commercial real estate world, many things can go wrong, and it might not happen, then how do you substantiate these raises? Do you take them away when a deal falls through? The town manager proposed a record-breaking 6.5% budget increase after an 8.7% increase a half a year ago for a 15.2% total increase in less than a year. Record-breaking, all-national, that's a record for anywhere in the country. I've never heard of such a thing. Making multiple job applications after only a few months in the job, signing a multi-year contract for a salary of $157,000, a significant increase from the outgoing manager's salary, then a few months later asking for an 8.3% raise for himself and other upper management based on theoretical successes, and they are only theoretical. And then with deserved public outrage, now partially backwarding, or I guess maybe completely backwarding, because nobody really said what's going on, on that is yet deserved demand. When are we ever going to stop wasting our time by always thinking about paying already overpaid employees even more before there is any accomplishment, and start focusing on fixing Groton and getting something that really counts accomplished for our town, and maybe then think about a reward? Similar to what Chris Regan said. Appears to me that upper management of Groton, for the most part, has been here for a very short time and do not even live in our town or even in our state. Our two head economic development people don't even live here, or own any property here, seem to think they deserve rewards that most of us can only dream of. They have made and received budget increases and pay raises year after year, far more than the cost of living has increased for the same period of time. Regardless of accomplishment, which has given our retired and active upper management wonderful lives at the expense of our lives, and made us citizens and businesses either leave or tighten our belts beyond any expectations. Right now, I have to set aside $3,500 a month...
Excuse me, Ms. Chipporini?
Yeah.
Could the people in the audience be quiet so we could listen to Ms. Chipporini speaking? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have to set aside $3,500 a month out of a lower income than our town manager presently receives before his desired raise. The significant sacrifice for me only allows me to live a simple life and to not make any improvements or even any need of maintenance to my home. I have worked very hard in my life, and I do not deserve this after icy town management that has not done well by Groton by any standards, yet continues to get rewarded more year after year for no reason at all. Most of them do not themselves have to pay these horrifically escalating taxes because they do not live here or own property here. I fail to understand the fear that past councils have had, and maybe this council will, too, to face the reality that when something or someone is not beneficial to the town, that you make change as quick as possible, and the last thing you do is overwhelmingly reward before any accomplishment. We'll see if this Democratic council has the guts, unlike the decades of Republican councils before you, to do the right thing and make change of significance for us. The residents and business of Groton, so that we finally see people and business moving to Groton, and as longtime residents and businesses can finally not be overburdened with horrendous life and business-limiting property taxes. And I've mentioned to a couple of you, I would do this job for $130,000 a year, and I have those degrees. I have an MBA from Wharton in real estate. I've worked for all over the world in very big projects. I've worked on companies that are 20 times the budget size of Groton. I did turnaround work, and I would do this job for $130,000. And, most importantly, I have compassion. I'm from here. My life and blood is here. I'm generationally here.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. So I'm going to throw that out there, and I would do an excellent job, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's everyone that signed up to speak. Is there anybody else here who would like to come up to the podium and state your name and address and talk to us? Okay, seeing none. We are on to responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Do any of the councilors wish to address any of the citizens that spoke this evening? Councilor Franco?
I prepared something for tonight. I would like to say that regardless of what you may have read in the comments section of the newspaper, I want to reassure you that there was no decisions made in executive session. There are no votes or motions while we're in executive session. All decisions and all votes will be here in the public. They always have been, and they will be. There's no backroom deals being done, and when we leave executive session, I personally do not know how some of my fellow councilors stand on some of these positions. And with all that said, although I can't speak about what happens in executive session, I am always open to talk to citizens if they have any questions or like to discuss any town topics. You're always welcome to contact me.
Councilor Zepperi?
I would just like to correct the perception that some people have about John Burt not being invested in Groton. He may be from out of town. He has come here from out of town, and he's been here a short time, but I have never seen anyone in an executive position work as hard as he has. I've only been on the council for a few months, but I've seen John, he's here tonight, he's been here all day working for the town. This isn't the only meeting he attends. I attended a meeting in Milford, Connecticut, one time. That wasn't a town meeting, it was a workshop for people who were learning how to run towns. And who shows up there but John Burt? He is all over this town. He puts in hours through the day and into the night, most days. He's here on the weekends, and he puts in a lot of time. I can say from my heart, I feel that if we lost John Burt to another town, we would be losing a very strong asset. And so the issue of his raise at this time has been removed, but I would like not to sully his honor in any way. This is a very good man, and he has made strong contributions to the interests of
Councilor Schmidt?
I would like to echo that, the remarks that Councilor Zepperi just made. I know that John Burt comes in every day at 6:00 a.m., he doesn't leave until late in the afternoon, he goes to night meetings, he is here on the weekend, and if we have questions or any information that we need, and email him, even on Sunday, any time that we contact him, he gets back to us with what information he has or what information he's going to be garnering for us. So we are very fortunate to have somebody with that kind of a mindset and aptitude to be working here in Groton, and I want to thank you for that, John.
Councilor Morosy?
Yes, I'd like to echo what Councilwoman Zepperi and Councilwoman Schmidt said. John has given us weekly reports, and it's the first time, I've been on the council a couple of times since 2014 and so, and we've never received reports like we get from John. He lets us know what's going on each week, what he's done, what he's going to do, and what meetings he had attended, and the status of certain things that have been carried over from time to time. I think we're very lucky to have a person with his experience and his openness and his willingness to work with us, and I'm very thankful that John is here. I've worked with the previous town manager, I don't want to say anything negative about him, but John is a fresh air. He certainly is welcomed by myself and some of the other councilmen.
Councilor O'Gorman?
I'd just like to say the same thing, too. I have not had, this is my first time up here, and I don't care what I have for a question, and I get an answer, which I think is wonderful. I appreciate the people that came out and spoke to us tonight. It's really informative when you do come, and there are things that maybe we have to look at a different way, or we have to do a little more research than we have done, and this opens our eyes to doing this. I'm not from Groton originally, but I'm very invested in this town. You know, Groton's a great place to be, and there really are some wonderful things that are going to be happening. And I think maybe if you could all take a moment and go to the films that the library does of different things that are going on, and there's been several wonderful presentations done by the Economic Development Department and the Planning Department, and there are definitely things that we feel very strongly are going to happen. Maybe not all of them, certainly, but certainly some of them. And they have worked very, very hard, but I think it would be good if you took a look at that information, you might feel a little better, as we do, that things are going to get better here in Groton. So thank you for coming, and anytime you want to pick up the phone and call, please do, or come back and sit in another one of our meetings, or go to the planning meetings. They're very informative, and everything's open. So please, thank you for coming.
Councilor Parker?
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and speaking about your concerns. I, myself, will be looking at everything over again, and it does take a lot to do things, and we do need to hear everybody's opinion and get a just, accurate information from everyone to hear what their concerns are and how to proceed on what you guys want to see what Groton wants to be like. Again, thank you again for coming out. We are available by cell phones, it's on the website, or email if you have any further concerns. So thank you.
I wanted to just say a few things. I echo what the other councillor said about Mr. Burt's responsiveness to our questions. I wanted to address the colas for retirees. We had an actuary present to us at the last committee of the whole, I believe. So it has not gone away, and we have been looking at it. So it's something that will be addressed, along with other issues with retirement. I wanted to echo what Councilor Franco said about executive session. Executive session is used for things that cannot be discussed publicly, like personnel matters. You cannot discuss personnel matters publicly. We will be voting, if we vote on any raises, publicly. However, you cannot go into personnel records in a public meeting, so that has to be done in executive session. And staffing concerns, as the others have stated, we will be continuing to look at these things and see what makes sense for the town, but we have a professional that we've hired on a daily basis to look at these things for us, and we take his advice. So know that we appreciate your being here, and we appreciate all your comments, and if you have further comments that you didn't get to share, sincerely, please do share them with us. You're welcome to write them up or speak to us after the meeting, we'd be happy to listen. Manager Burt?
I wanted to touch base, one, on the retiree colas, that we'd had some numbers run back in maybe November, December, and we've asked for updated numbers. We had a presentation last... We had a presentation last week, and we should, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're gonna have the numbers in the next week or so, is the hope. So, that, that'll be presented during the budget hearings to allow for decision to be made. So, that has been on the radar the whole time, and we've been pursuing it. And that would be for all retirees, not for just one segment. So, I think that's the goal, is to, you know, treat everyone equal at the same time. Next, I just want to thank the council for their kind comments. And then, last, just to apologize for the optics of anything, you know, it's been a hard transition from the Midwest, and I've lost my counsel right after getting here. There's been a lot of changes. Getting used to the area, and Connecticut's expensive, that's been hard, and I'm adapting to that. Much different than the Midwest. But all I could say is I'm committed to being here. My son's in eighth grade, and my daughter's in 11th, and I plan on being here, certainly through them getting out of school. I'll show my commitment, and I hope you give me some time.
Thank you. All right, we are on to the consent calendar item number six on the agenda. Is there a motion to move the consent calendar?
Make a motion to move the consent calendar?
Move by Morawcy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Anybody need a minute to look it over? All those in favor of moving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to item seven, communications and reports. Town councilors, Councilor Morawcy, would you like to start off?
Yeah, I attended the seat meeting, the budget meetings, and last month, the appointments committee meeting, I forgot to report that last night.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
I also have been attending the budget meetings, and also, the city of Groton hosted the Easter egg hunt, or I should say, grab and dash, which was a nice event, and I believe that's it.
Councilor Franco?
Budget meetings, town affairs, that's about that.
Thank you, Councilor Heed.
I attended the personnel meeting on March 20th, Personnel Committee. The Irish Parade last weekend, and the Easter egg, or Easter dash, or whatever we call it in the city this past Saturday.
Thank you. Councilor Overy?
Just working on the budget.
Councilor Atwater?
I also have been attending the budget meetings. This morning, I was at a council meeting for the Children First Groton and School Readiness Program. This afternoon, I went to hear Senator Murphy's panel discussing transportation issues in the southeast part of Connecticut. I also was able to squeeze in a doctor's appointment in West Haven, and I'm fortunate to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for flying back on 95. Councilor Schmidt?
Thank you. I also attended the budget meetings, as well as the Personnel Committee meeting, and I did get two emails, one from Lee Vincent about the transfer station, and another one from Robert Frank about requesting a resolution from the council.
I also attended the transportation meeting, Chris Murphy sponsored today, and I can say, like most government functions, a lot of problems were identified, but there were no solutions.
I also have been attending budget meetings, and I had the privilege of marching in the Irish Parade with Councilor Parker and Councilor Heed. And our former RTM moderator, Kevin Power, is on the Irish Parade Committee, so it was nice to see him again as well.
Mr. Burt, do you have any, oh, I'm sorry, we have to go to clerk of the representative town meeting first.
The representative town meeting, the next regular meeting, will be April 11th at the Groton Senior Center at 7:30 p.m. They do have quite a few items on their agenda that are a result of the work of the council, plus their own rules.
Excellent. Clerk of the council?
I don't have anything to report that hasn't already been said, but thank you for participating.
Thank you. Now to the town manager.
Road bond, we're going through the road bonding process. We've had our, we've had the, we're looking for, we've had the Fitch, Moody's, sort of, we've had them do their review. And we've come out stable, we've stayed the same in all three reviews. S&amp;P gave, Standard and Poor's gave us an AA positive, stable outlook. Moody's retained the AA two with a negative outlook. However, they've made some comments about maybe in the next year, taking that negative outlook off, from what they're saying, if all continues. And then, Fitch, AA, stable outlook. So, everything remains as is for the ratings, ratings agencies, that's what I was looking for.
There we go.
We're also getting information on hybrid plan for non-union new employees. That we'll be presenting, and once we get that information for some options on that. I attended Rotary Club for the first time today, just to try it out. One of you were there, and one of you were not. I did sit next to Mr. Vincent there, and talked to him some about the, about his email, and Gary Schneider is reviewing that, and will eventually give a response. I'm not saying tonight, but eventually will give a response to that email. I'm looking at, I am looking at benchmarking for different departments, trying to get those in place soon, so that we kind of, you know, track where, how we're doing and where we're going for different departments. And then, I thought there was one more, but I guess that's it. I was at the Irish Parade, too. It was cold.
Should have marched with us. Any department heads that need to report out tonight? No? Okay, very good. On to item eight, committee reports, personnel and appointments committee. Chairman Heed?
Let's see, we, I believe it's on here to move them. Actually, it is. Which one?
Okay, so we'll be moving an item later this evening, then?
Correct.
Okay. Temporary rules and procedures, Chairman Heed?
Oh, yes. Again, we went through all of the rules and procedures line by line, challenged everything repeatedly. It was exhausting and rewarding and very interesting, and thank you again to the town staff, Betsy McCausure and Nikki B., for all of their wonderful assistance.
And committee of the whole, everything that we did there is gonna be on the agenda tonight. Committee of the whole is our working meeting, so anything we're moving tonight seems as if we're rubber stamping, but we're not actually rubber stamping it. We've been through it all in committee of the whole. So, if you need background information, you're welcome to go to the town website and view the meetings there, if you're looking for more details on why we're voting the way we're voting. So, we're on to item number nine now, new business. This is 2017-0159. Councilor Morawcy, please.
2017-0159, Colonel Ledgerd School Site. Resolution terminating the lease agreement with the city of Groton for the Colonel Ledgerd School Site. Whereas on September 21st, 2010, the town council authorized a lease agreement with the city of Groton and Groton Utilities for the Colonel Ledgerd School Site at 120 West Street, consisting of 8.32 acres of land and the 20,378 square foot former school building. And whereas, by a letter from Mayor Keith Hendrick dated March 8th, 2018, the city of Groton has asked to terminate the lease under Section 11, subsection I, which is by mutual written agreement of the parties. And whereas, the city of Groton has offered to transfer the existing security monitoring agreement and associated payments to the town of Groton. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council, by mutual agreement with the city of Groton, terminates the lease agreement with the Colonel Ledgerd School Site and accepts the transfer of the security monitoring agreement and associated payments. And be it further resolved that the town council authorizes the town manager, John Burt, to sign the executive and execute whatever documents is necessary to effective the lease termination. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heed. Move by Morawcy, seconded by Heed. Is there any discussion on 2017-0159, transfer of the Colonel Ledgerd School Site? Councilor Parker?
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but were we transferring then? Sorry. The monitoring?
I have to go back in and look. I know there was a lot of discussion about that. Do you know off the top of your head?
I thought we were, yeah. That was my understanding.
I thought we were.
And then, the idea is seeing, seeing whether it's needed, once we have it, and we can make a determination at that point.
The monitoring was by the police department. That wasn't the security system. The monitoring was already installed.
Security monitoring agreement and associated payments, that's.
Right. It was talked about, like, what'd they say, maybe $60 a month, I think was, Gary, is that sound right? Sixty, about 60 a month, I think they said. Yeah, I believe it was said, we would take it on, but then see if it was needed, once it was transferred over.
Would it be in the notes?
Should be.
Minutes from the last meeting?
327 minutes. Well, give us a second, and let's look and see. If anybody has theirs, they can find it faster than I can. I challenge you. Do you have minutes with you? It's gonna take me a minute to go back in there. Item, item two, voted 7-2-0, terminate by mutual written agreement the lease with the city of Groton for the Colonel Ledgerd School Site and terminate the security monitoring system agreement, is what I have in my minute, my notes here. 7-2-0.
That's what I recall.
And Zepari and Overy were opposed to that option. So, then, we need to clarify the language here? Or do you think this is sufficient language to understand that the vote was to terminate the security monitoring agreement? Madam Clerk, do you recommend we amend this?
No, I think it clearly says that you're offering, there was an offer to transfer, but you were terminating.
Terminate the lease agreement and accept the transfer of the security monitoring agreement.
So, are you, did you say that the council, 7 to 2, or wants to terminate?
Terminate.
The, okay.
The agreement and the security monitoring.
Then we better rewrite this.
Excuse me?
We better rewrite this.
So, we should just strike.
Should we just amend?
Yeah, you can, you can definitely amend.
Councilor Atwater?
I would say that we, we can't terminate the monitoring agreement until it's in our possession. So, first, you have to vote on this motion to have it transferred over to us, and then in another motion, we make the decision whether we want to terminate it or not.
Mr. Burt, what do you recommend?
Well, they gave us the option of terminate. What they would do is, basically, we're telling them, we'll, you know, allow you to terminate, and including the, I'd rather just amend it personally than do it separate, and just strike from, after terminates the lease agreement for the Ledgerd, Colonel Ledgerd School Site, and then basically strike and accept the transfer of the security monitoring agreement and associated payment.
Or should we insert and terminate the transfer of the security monitoring agreement?
Either way.
I, they, they offered, when they said they were gonna transfer it to us, the mayor, I believe, said he would terminate the service before the turnover to us. So, he would break the agreement with Rue instead of us doing it, is what I understood the mayor to say. If somebody wants to make an amendment to that? Councilor Atwater?
Is the monitoring equipment worth anything?
Yes. You don't own it, you're leasing it.
I think they represented that it was.
I'm just wondering if there's any value that we're giving up by terminating.
I, I thought he said it wasn't very valuable at this point. It was a, the only reason it was there was because there was furniture inside. Councilor Heed?
It was attached to the doors. So, if you opened the door, an alarm would go off at the police station, and they would call our police department to go over and check it out. But there was no motion or video camera inside that belonged to the security company. The motion, the equipment inside that was a video feed, went directly into the city police department.
And it was $60 a month?
For the security at the doors.
Right. So, again, is, is there a motion?
I wonder if we, I wonder if we ask the question, if there is a contract, we're sure we can get out of the contract.
Yes, there is a contract, and the mayor said she would terminate the contract unless we chose to carry the contract forward.
So, if we make a motion to amend the motion to change terminates the lease agreement for, sorry, move on, and accepts the transfer of security monitoring, instead says and intends to cancel security monitoring agreement and associated payments?
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
Is there a second for the motion?
So, you're at the whereas, you're saying the city of Groton has offered to transfer, to transfer an existing security monitor agreement and associated payments, and you're just going to change that to?
He's moving to change the resolve.
Oh, okay, all right.
From the.
So, resolve that the town council, by mutual agreement with the city of Groton, terminates the lease agreement for the Colonel Ledgerd School Site and.
Terminate.
Terminates the security monitoring agreement and associated payments, and be it further, et cetera.
Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Seconded, amended by Heed, seconded by Morawcy. Madam Clerk, are you set with the amended language? Okay, so then, we will vote unless there's further discussion on the amendment? Yes?
We can't terminate it because it's not in our name. So, really, we should be directing the, the city to terminate, because otherwise, you have to accept it and, and then terminate it. To terminate, we'd have to first accept it.
Mutual agreement with the city of Groton terminates the lease agreement for the Colonel Ledgerd School, and.
Directs the city to, to terminate the, the security monitoring agreement.
Okay, so that would be the second amendment. So, Councilor Franco, would you like to amend it further?
I'd like to make a motion to amend, amended amendment. I'll pick up where it says Colonel Ledgerd School Site and directs the city of Groton to terminate the security monitoring agreement and associated payments.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker. Is there discussion on this? Excuse me?
I think an amendment to an amendment can be made if the original amendment is withdrawn by the person who made that amendment.
Councilor Heed and Councilor Morawcy, would you like to withdraw your original motion in seconds?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The original amendment has been withdrawn, so then we are left with, I think you're good to go. If you'd like to make it again, you're welcome to, but I think we're set.
Who's seconded that?
Franco and Parker.
Thank you.
So, it says, resolve that the town council, by mutual agreement with the city of Groton, terminates the lease agreement for the Colonel Ledgerd School and directs the city of Groton to terminate the security monitoring agreement and associated payments. Madam Clerk, is that sufficient?
That works for me.
Any further discussion? And we thought this was gonna be easy. Do you have something else, Councilor Atwater?
I, I just don't feel that we can tell the city of Groton what to do. And it, we're telling them to terminate. What we really want to just say is, we don't want the security.
Right, and that's, that's what they ask us. They ask us if we wanted them to keep it, or we wanted them to terminate it. So, we're directing, we're answering your question. Yes, we want you to terminate it, which is what we moved in committee of the whole.
Are we open to discussion about the whole thing?
If you'd like, yes.
I would like it noted that in the literature underneath, it says, this school, when they, if it was ever to be taken back, they wanted to put it on the market right away. And I wanted that to be noted, that we should possibly review this again.
Oh, the second paragraph there in the, in the italics?
So, I'd like to put this on the market in the future, as soon as we can, if we are all in agreement.
And that is the intent.
Yes.
Though there's some, you know, you'd have to direct me if you want to change the priority, because we have, like, Groton Heights, that's next in the queue, so. Anytime you want, you can always redirect us on what that order of sale is.
All right. Seeing no further discussion.
There's one more.
One more? I'm sorry. Councilors.
I, I did not vote for this when we had it in the council of the whole, because I think the property is vulnerable to damage by vandals, and I think it would be well worthwhile to continue the monitoring. Although I am in favor of taking back the property from the city of Groton, I am opposed to removing the monitoring. For that reason, I will vote against this motion as it's phrased now. I don't know who will vote for me. I think I'll be a voice crying in the wilderness once more. Maybe Leanne will join me once more, we'll see.
Any other discussion? All right, so I call for a vote on item number 2017-0159, Colonel Ledgerd School Site. All those in favor of the amended resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Councilors Overy and Councilor Zepari?
My dear friend, again.
And abstentions? That passes 7-2-0. On to 2017-0202, Appointment to Knowang School Public Gardens Task Force. Do we want? Do we want Counselor Heath to do this, or do you want just to go online again? Counselor Parker?
Appointments to Noank School Public Gardens Task Force. Resolve that Genevieve Serf, sixty William Street, Noank is hereby appointed to the Noank School Public Gardens Task Force. Do I need to read the legislative history?
No.
I so move.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Moravsek. Any discussion on appointing Genevieve Serf to the Noank Public Gardens Task Force? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Item twenty-seventeen-zero-two-seven-nine, miscellaneous and ad hoc committee appointments.
I make a resolution making appointments to miscellaneous and ad hoc committees, whereas the town council makes appointments to miscellaneous and ad hoc local and regional committees, as well as appointing liaisons to other groups. And whereas upon its election, every two years, the town council should reconsider these appointments, now therefore be resolved that the following individuals are appointed or reaffirmed as appointees to the groups as noted. Shall I read them all?
Yes. Please.
Voting Advisory Board Liaison, Counselor Rich Moravsek. Cable Television Advisory Council, Counselor Joe Zepary, Counselor Rita Schmidt, William Johnson. Children First Groton, Counselor David Atwater. Eastern Regional Ketchment Area Council, David Hume. Eastern Tourism District, Counselor Rita Schmidt. Economic Development Commission Liaison, Counselor Leann Overy, Counselor Rachel Franco. Golf Advisory Board, Mayor Patrice Granitowski. Long Island Sound Advisory Council, Counselor Conrad Heath. Mystic Cooperative Task Force, Counselor Joe Zepary. Pequot Woods Board of Trustees, Mayor Patrice Granitowski. Who Ready, School Readiness Council, Counselor David Atwater. Southeast Area Transit, Counselor David, Richard Moravsek. Mark Ophinger? Is he still on that?
Yep.
Okay. Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, Mayor Patrice Granitowski and Town Manager John Burt. Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority, Gary Schneider, Counselor David Atwater. Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority Representative Advisory Board, Counselor Conrad Heath, Mary Lou Smith. Thames Valley Council for Community Action, Counselor Juliet Parker. Town Council RTM Board of Education Liaison Committee, Counselor David Atwater, Counselor Rachel Franco, Counselor Julia Parker, Mayor Patrice Granitowski. Trails Coordinating Task Force, Counselor Rachel Franco, Carla Henchell, Bernard French. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Any discussion on the appointments to the committees? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Twenty-seventeen-zero-two-nine-three, Adoption of Rules for the Thirty-First Town Council, Counselor Heath?
Resolution adopting rules for the Thirty-First Town Council, where except the first communion of the Thirty-First Town Council on December fifth, twenty-seventeen, Mayor Patrice Granitowski appointed a temporary rules committee comprised of Counselors Heath, Parker, and Zepary. Whereas the recommendations for the temporary rules committee have been reviewed by the committee of the whole, now therefore be it resolved that the town council adopts the rules of procedure of the Thirty-First Town Council. Attached said rules to be effective immediately, I so move.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Zepary. Is there any discussion on adoption of the rules? I just want to thank the committee, I know it was a long and arduous task, and I want to thank you very much for taking the time to go through everything so thoroughly. If there's no further discussion, we will vote on twenty-seventeen-zero-two-nine-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Twenty-eighteen-zero-zero-two-nine, Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Various Ordinances to Increase Fines. Madam Clerk, how do you recommend Counselor Overy handle this? Since it's two and a half pages long.
All right, so she'll read the, the adoption, the number, number of sections that are going to be amended and increased, and then she'll skip on down to...
For item eight, what should be the date that's inserted there?
It's forty-five days after enactment, and, um, I did it from the RTM, and I'm putting it on the RTM, it may lead, that puts in thirty-eight days, so thirty-eight days from there.
Can we leave it blank, and you can fill it in later, or do we need to specify now?
We should specify it now.
Okay.
And I wish that, see, the thing about it is, if it, yeah, let's get forty-five days from today.
Forty-five days from adoption by the RTM, correct?
No, adoption by the council, but the RTM has forty-five days to...
Oh, to act, that's correct.
To veto.
Okay.
They don't, it's, it's, it's accepted by the council and made law, but it doesn't enact until forty-five days, and it gives the, the RTM forty-five days to veto.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, Counselors Zepary.
I think we should consider each of these individually, each of the ordinances that are being changed individually. We have one ordinance that, the very first one is, is rather ambiguous at best, and then there are two ordinances that concern penalties for violating licenses for massage pollers and for porn shops, and then we have another ordinance that restricts the use of some public roads. They're very different concepts. I don't mind lumping porn shops and massage pollers licensing abuses into one, but I do mind the other two being lumped in, because I have some things I would say about both of the other two.
Any other comments? Yes?
There's sections of the same ordinance though, so I don't know if you can, other than just as one lump, you can talk about pieces of it certainly, and look to amend, but it's one ordinance.
May seventeen.
Oh, I got the eighteenth, May seventeen?
Forty-five days from today.
Thank you. May seventeen. Counselor Franco?
This has been before us twice now, hasn't it?
Right.
Am I correct?
That's correct.
And we've gone over these, and I do recall we approved these in the past. We've, we've seen this twice now. I think it, because you had some changes you wanted made before, that were, there were some changes to be made before, they were corrected, then they were brought back to us.
Frankly, I don't remember seeing number one before. And I'm not sure, we talked about porn shops and massage pollers before either, but I don't have any problem with stiffing that, but being very severe with that. I do have some problems with the other two.
Is there any other discussion? Oh, we need to get this onto the floor. We, we need to get this onto the floor, so Counselor Overy, please.
Adoption of the ordinance amending various ordinances to increase fines. Adoption of an ordinance to amend sections one-seven, seven-thirty-one, ten-one-oh-one, ten-one-forty, ten-one-eighty-four, eleven-five-six, and eleven-eighty-one of the code of ordinances being ordained by the Town of Groton. Is that enough?
And then I think she, the clerk wanted you to skip.
I so move. Because there is no resolve.
I so move, second.
Moved by Overy, seconded by Moravsek.
Just a clarification, this ordinance has been on the town website for at least two months for review, but it's now going to be sent to the RTM, and it will be posted in the newspaper, along with any other ordinance that you approved. They have a very expensive price tag.
Thank you. It's the price you pay for open government.
I do have a copy of what we did see and what we went over, and it looks the same as what I'm seeing in this package.
Is there any other discussion? Counselors Zepary?
Well, the first, the first ordinance that we're dealing with is section one-seven, general penalty. And this says that whenever in this code or any other ordinance of the town, or rule or regulation promulgated by any officer thereof under authority vested in him by law or ordinance, any act is prohibited or is declared to be unlawful or an offense, or the doing of any act is required, or the failure to, to do any act is declared to be unlawful. Where no specific penalty is provided, the violation of each ordinance, rule, or regulation shall be punished by a fine not exceeding two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Each day, any such violation shall continue, shall constitute a separate offense. Now, we're saying that we can assign a penalty after the fact. We say something is unlawful, and we can say that in an ordinance, but if we have failed to include a penalty in that, we can arbitrarily, at some later date, after we can say to that person, you have to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and that's unconstitutional. So I think that is, is clearly wrong. It says, it says where no specific is, penalty is provided, the violation of such ordinance, rule, or regulation shall be punished by a fine not exceeding two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Well, if there is no specific penalty provided, then there can be no specific penalty imposed upon the person who breaks the law. So I, if this is intended to limit our, the town's ability to, to fine people more than two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that's not what it says. If it says that we can penalize people for violation of ordinances that have no penalty provided in them, then we are acting against the law. And I think, I, I think that's, if you read the language of this ordinance, that's the arbitrary and ambiguous nature of it.
Madam Clerk, would you like to address any of that?
I don't think it's meant to be arbitrary or ambiguous, because it's saying that it's not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Now, most everything that we have in town has a law associated with it. I mean, if you read the entire ordinance, these aren't obscure things. It's not, you know, jaywalking, you're gonna be charged two-fifty. Now, it's, it's a matter that it can't exceed two-fifty, so you couldn't, you couldn't violate someone's rights by saying, I'm gonna charge you a million dollars for jaywalking.
I understand that, and I can read into this ordinance what you're saying, but what the ordinance says is ambiguous, because where, it includes the clause, where no specific penalty is provided, you can impose a penalty up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Well, where no specific penalty is provided, you can impose no penalty. But that's not what this states.
Excuse me, Manager Burt, I, this has been reviewed by our attorneys, has it not?
Yeah, and that language had been in the previous version, except for the amount changed. I assume the early version had, had been vetted, I can't say that for certain, but, but the new one had been vetted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know this is a revision of an old, old law, but when we're revising, we should take care of the language in it. Personally, if I had a client, I would love to have a client to take that all the way to the Supreme Court, because I think it is the type of law that is, is ambiguous, and it, and it can be, for instance, we're all Democrats here at this, at this council now. If a Republican gets caught jaywalking, by golly, we should fine him two-hundred-and-fifty bucks. I, I think we have to be very careful about this thing, huh?
That would be other truth.
Yeah.
Unless there is a regulation that provides for penalty for it.
Okay, so we, we have twenty-eighteen-zero-zero-two-nine on the floor, Counselors Zepary's objections have been noted.
I have additional objections.
Has anyone else wish to speak? Continue.
Okay, I, I've spoken to that one, and the last one I've spoken against before, and that's the reservation of the list of town roads to prohibit livery buses. They don't prohibit buses in general, they prohibit livery buses. That means those roads are capable of handling buses, certainly capable of handling school buses. So why do we prohibit liveries? Now, liveries could include, for instance, if I lived on one of those streets and my daughter were being married, and I ordered a limousine to take her to church that day, I would be ordering a livery to come down that street, I'd be in violation of the law. I, I just think this is an unnecessary law, I'm not sure what the purpose is, it's not to protect the roads, because we're allowing other buses, including school buses and other, and seat buses, and other types of buses to come by. It's just this word livery that gets stuck in there, and I think it's because people who live on those roads generally don't want tourists coming down the road. Well, we, these are public roads, and they should be used by the public for all purposes that are reasonable for the public, and among them are the passage of vehicles carrying tourists. So I am very much opposed to that, that rule.
If I might, please, section eleven-eighty-one, Bus Motor Vehicles and Livery Service, section A specifically says, purpose, for the purpose of conducting commercial tours.
Yeah.
Right. So that would mean people loading up a bus and riding through Mystic to look around at houses and such. That doesn't mean taking a busload of people to Ford's Lobster. It's not prohibiting that, it's prohibiting people from taking buses to look at people's houses in the Town of Groton. Counselor Overy and then Franco.
Well, I would just like to respond to what you said.
Excuse me, Counselor Overy, Franco, and Moravsek are next. Overy?
Well, it seems to me, I remember there being a lot more to this than there is now. There was, and I can't remember it well, but I probably should find it, because it was specific in what was trying to be prohibited. And I, I was not in favor of it at the time, so I'm not talking about whether I'm in favor of it or not, but I think that there were certain restrictions, and, and I think unfortunately with them not being here, it's, it's a little ambiguous, and I apologize for the fact that I should have said this before.
Counselor Franco and then Moravsek?
Also in section eleven-eighty-one, section B, it says definitions, the term motor vehicle of the bus type in livery service means that includes every motor vehicle with a seating capacity of ten or more passengers, which is used for transportation of passengers for hire, with the exception, I mean, they don't want buses down these streets, they're probably narrow roads, there's probably reasons for it that, that is beyond us, that people have figured this out before us.
Counselor Moravsek is next?
Yeah, I think, a lot of these roads are narrow, and there's no turnaround, and so if, if the buses go down those streets, there's no way them turn, those buses turning around without going on private property and backing up. And I, I think there was a, a reasonable review of a lot of these roads for that reason. If you had a wedding or so and you required an additional bus load of people, I think you could get a variance from the police chief. I, I know that they, they do that down in Groton Long Point, because we have the same type of ordinance down there.
Now, you say a lot of these streets are narrow, I lived in Mystic, I grew up in Mystic, in the region of Gravel Street and of Eldridge Street, and those streets can accommodate buses very easily. And I, I can tell you, a lot of these other streets, I, I haven't been on all of them that I can remember so vividly as those, but if we're going to allow, if we're gonna prohibit buses on them because they can't turn around, then we should say no buses on those streets. We should say no school buses, we should say no seat buses, no buses, because buses can't turn around, but that's not what we're saying. This ordinance is to prohibit buses that are carrying tourists, and those are public roads, and one, and people are free to use public roads for whatever purpose that they desire that's consistent with their use, their reasonable use. This is imposing restrictions on a few streets, not the whole town. We don't want to restrict tourists in Mystic, we want tourists in Mystic, because they bring money into the merchants there, and the merchants pay taxes here. So I, I, I think this law is directed to preserving the privacy of a certain few people in the town, and I don't think that's what we should be doing. Either we preserve it for everyone, or we don't preserve it for anyone, but we shouldn't have an elite with special conditions.
Counselor Schmidt?
I think that this part of the ordinance has been, part of the ordinance has not been actually changed at all, and it came about because there were so many buses of ten people and less that were going up and down the streets with loudspeakers and pointing out the different houses, they weren't just driving through, they were creating a, a real racket, a real noise, people were losing their privacy, and this is why, I, I live on Bank Street, and if we were prohibiting semi-rigs and, and big trucks and tractor trailers and all kinds of vehicles, that would be wonderful, but we have not, and so they are there continually, from six o'clock in the morning until ten o'clock at night. So this is just... So this is just a little bonus that they're giving us.
Counselor Maravik.
Yeah, I just want to point out, I don't think there's been any problems with the bus transportation people on these ordinances. There's no complaints that we've heard.
And if I just might add, there are buses that go to these places, but as Counselor Maravik pointed out earlier, they move on to public property, I mean, private property, excuse me, they move on to private property in order to turn around and negotiate. So for example, if they're going to a business, they pull into the drive of the business, make their turnaround, and come back out. So, and as Counselor Schmidt said, this has been in existence for quite a while now, and there haven't been issues from any of the commercial businesses being served by the buses or anyone else. It seems to be functioning well in the community, the residents seem fine with it, the business owners seem fine with it. So I am fine with adopting it as it is. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Heath.
To the town manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the only significant change to this particular section of the ordinance was the fine.
Nothing changed in that section?
No.
To make it clear, the entire, all the areas were reviewed by the town council, though, even if they weren't being changed.
Counselor Obree, sorry.
I'm going to just suggest that we should probably remember what it was like, it was not our council, it was the other council, I believe, that wanted to, there were a group of us that wanted to sign on the highway saying you could go down Allen Street to Mystic, and this place was full. And you're probably going to have the same thing if you make a change to this. People, you know, they're very active when it comes to things like this.
Is there any, Counselor Atwater?
I guess I'd just like to point out that if you read the whole sentence rather than just picking, Counselor Sipari refers to the operation of motor vehicles of the bus type in livery service. But if you continue on, it says, "For the purpose of conducting commercial tours on any of the enumerated public streets." So it's specific to commercial tourists, it's not just to buses. So I don't have a problem with it.
Very good. Are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor-
I just wanted to tell you, it's the 18th, not the 17th.
It is the 18th. Okay, so do we need to include that in what we're moving? I believe so.
Each selection of this ordinance shall be effective on 5/18/2018.
Do we need to reread, or are we good with that?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, so adding the date was moved by Obree, seconded by Atwater. So are we okay, or do we need to read the whole thing? We're good? All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2018-0029 with the date of May 18th, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed, Sipari, and zero abstaining. So moved. We are on to 2018-0050, Counselor Atwater, the lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to Quanik Bridge Fire District.
Resolution authorizing a lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to Quanik Bridge Fire District, whereas the town manager, John Burr, authorized preparation of a lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to the Quanik Bridge Fire District for the district's fire marshal, and whereas the term of the lease shall be from April 4th, 2018, to June 30th, 2023, with automatic one-year renewals, and whereas the town council has reviewed a draft of the lease, and whereas the planning commission has made a favorable recommendation on the lease in response to the referral under Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-24, now therefore be it resolved, the town manager, John Burr, is authorized to finalize and execute the lease described above. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. Is there any discussion on the lease of the Town Hall Annex Office Space? And we have the chief here, and I believe Mr. Yuha represents the fire district as well, thank you for coming out. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2018-0050, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0060, Road Reconstruction Bond Year Six Projects, Counselor Schmidt.
Resolution accepting year six reports from the town, city, and Groton Long Point for the road maintenance and rehabilitation program, whereas in November 2012, Groton voters approved a five-year road maintenance and rehabilitation program for calendar years 2013 through 2017 in the amount of $11,200,000. That provides funding for the city, the town, and Groton Long Point to maintain and rehabilitate the community's road system, and whereas the town council and RTM approve the reappropriation of any portion of said $11,200,000 which has not been expended or financed, and whereas the road maintenance and rehabilitation program requires each entity to file a report with the town council by December 30th of each year that identifies the roads completed in the calendar year, compares estimated costs to actual costs, and identifies the roads to be addressed in the upcoming year, and whereas the town council has reviewed the reports and proposed list of roads to be maintained, rehabilitated in calendar year 2018, now therefore be it resolved that the town council accepts the year six road maintenance and rehabilitation program reports from the town, city, and Groton Long Point. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Maravik. Is there any discussion on the road reconstruction bond projects? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0060, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We're on to 2018-0067, the appointment of other attorneys as recommended by the town attorney, Counselor Sipari.
2018-0067, appointment of other attorneys as recommended by the town attorney. Resolution appointing other attorneys as recommended by the town attorney, whereas the town charter at 8.2.2 provides that the town attorney may, with the approval of the town council, appoint attorneys to perform specialized services or otherwise to assist the town attorney, and whereas the town attorney is empowered by the charter to recommend the terms of employment of such attorneys, therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the recommendation of the town attorney Duggan, the following attorneys may be appointed and continue to serve in the assignments indicated under terms prescribed by the town attorney until such time as their replacements may be approved by the town council. Board of Education attorneys from Bircham, Moses, and Devlin, PC, Floyd Dugus, Paula Anthony, Eric Barber, John Kelleal, Jennifer Jocenski, Rebecca Goldberg, Michelle Lobin, Chris Sugar, Christine Sullivan, bond counsel from Day Pitney, LLP, Judith Blank, Doug Gillette, Namida Shaw, Richard Wasserman, Glenn Rybacki, Emily Kagan, Kristen Burgess. I so move.
Second. Moved by Sipari and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the appointment of the other attorneys as recommended by our attorney? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0067, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0068, supplemental appropriation from Capital Reserve for library senior center variable message display sign, Counselor Maravik.
Resolution authorizing a supplementary appropriation from the Capital Reserve Fund, whereas a project was approved in fiscal year 2018, capital improvement plan entitled 4I, variable message display, with anticipated funding from fundraising and grants, and whereas the town has estimated the total construction cost to be $26,800, and whereas the Park, Groton Parks Foundation has $7,355 for the project from the senior center and library fundraisers, and whereas the town has been awarded $20,000 reimbursable grant from the Office of Emergency Management for this project, which will be returned to the Capital Reserve Fund, and whereas the finance director has determined that there are sufficient funds in the fund balance of the Capital Reserve, now therefore be it resolved that the supplementary appropriation of $20,000 be made from the Capital Reserve Fund's fund balance for fiscal year ending 2018, capital project 4I, variable message display, I so move, and it has to be referred to the RTM.
653. Second. Moved by Maravik, seconded by Parker, that resolution, 2018-0068, the report 653 to the RTM. Is there any discussion? Library Director Ryder is here, thank you for coming out this evening. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0068, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0069, the naming of the community center at Fitch Middle School, Counselor Parker.
Resolution designating a name for the community center portion of the former Fitch Middle School, whereas the Parks and Recreation Department would like to identify that portion of the former Fitch Middle School that the department will be moving into as a community center, and whereas the Parks and Recreation Department sought community input in the naming of the community center, and whereas the two most suggested names were Groton Community Center and Fitch Community Center, now therefore be it resolved that the town council designates the portion of the building that the Parks and Recreation Department will be moving into as a Groton Community Center, with the name Fitch to remain on the front of the building. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heath. Any discussion on the naming of the community center? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0069, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counselor Franco, 2018-0074, Pfizer Local Community Grant Senior Center.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for the Pfizer Grant for a senior center without limits program, whereas the senior center would like to apply for grant funds in the amount of $5,000 from the Pfizer Local Community Grant Program, and whereas the grant will fund the technology materials to offer the senior center without limits, and to improve Wi-Fi capability at the center by purchasing laptops, webcams, wireless heads, now therefore be resolved that the town manager or his designee is authorized to apply for the Pfizer Grant for a senior center without limits program. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Heath. Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0074, authorizing the grant applications, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Thank you. 2018-0077, Town-City Highway Analysis, Counselor Heath.
Resolution for fiscal year ending 2018, general contingency transfer for Town-City Highway Analysis, whereas the town charter provides for general contingency transfers during the year, and whereas the town council desires conducting a comparative analysis of the city and town highway operations, and whereas the town manager and city mayor have agreed that the comparative analysis will be funded at 50% each, and whereas the town and city have selected a consulting firm to conduct such analysis, and the estimated cost is $70,000, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes a transfer of $35,000 from the general fund contingency account number 10741549 to the Public Works account 103505290 for 50% of the comparative analysis of the city and town highway operations, and authorizes the town manager to enter into a contract for such analysis and refer to RTM under Rule 6.5.3. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Maravik. Any discussion on the Town-City Highway Analysis funding? Counselor Franco.
We received an email from Mr. Frank, I believe all of us. I wanted to ask you, is this binding in any way, the results?
No, not in any way, no. Matter of fact, as we get into it, we could stop the study at any time, too, you know, if we didn't find it valuable as we went along.
And they're going to give us updates along the way, is that right?
Oh, certainly, yeah.
And it should be completed within six months?
Yeah, they told us, yeah, outside it should be.
Okay.
I'm hoping for a little quicker, but we'll see.
Any other discussion?
I think we all received an email from former counselor Bob Frank, and he outlined
basically the problems that the town has with the city as far as the highway is concerned. And there was a presentation that Bob had put on the email so that we could understand it a little bit better. And I think because that still holds, and the city felt that there's, they didn't take the position that the town took or the council took at the time, this is why we're going into this study. And based on the findings of that, we still have the right to look at it and dissolve, you know, our differences.
What I would like to add is that the town manager and the city mayor have been meeting on a regular basis to discuss many issues, this is just one of the things. So I'm hopeful that the relationship will improve as we keep the lines of communication open and we proceed with this study. Seeing no further comments, I'll call for a vote on 2018-0077, Town-City Highway Analysis. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. So we're on to 2018-0078, and you have the updated language in front of you, the new resolution that has the yellow at the top of the page. Counselor Obree.
Resolution to create Human Resource Director Assistant Town Manager's position and to extend the town manager's contract, whereas the town council desires to make changes to certain positions and/or to salaries and benefits associated with certain positions effective April 9th, 2018, now therefore be it resolved that the position of Human Resource Director is revised, following approval by the town manager to Human Resource Director Assistant Town Manager with a salary of $108,212 on the Assistant Town Manager's pay scale, and be it further resolved that the job description for Human Resource Director Assistant Town Manager position is approved, and be it further resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign a contract with the town manager to include an extension of the terms of the contract by one year plus reimbursement for mileage for work-related travel outside of town, and be it further resolved that the funds to pay for these changes come from existing budgets for the remainder of 2018. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Obree, seconded by Atwater. And I just wanted to add that our attorney has looked at all the language here, and it's all perfectly legal and within the bounds of what we are able to do. Is there any discussion? Counselor Maravik.
Yeah, I realize that there was, people are spoken against this situation, but I think if we left the Human Resource Director where he was, and we went out and hired an Assistant Town Manager, we would be spending a heck of a lot more money than the difference between what the human resource director gets now and what we're recommending. So I think this is a smart move in the way that the, we're able to save money in terms of, by having the Human Resource Director take both positions, which I'm sure he can well handle. He has a very good background that I understand from the Boston area, and I think that he's more than qualified to do the job. The town manager, as we mentioned earlier, is here from 6:00 until, gosh knows, at night after the meetings. There's so many meetings that have to be, he has to go to, that it's difficult for him to continue and be as alert as we'd like him to be. Therefore, that's why we're recommending that there's an Assistant Town Manager position be placed on the docket so that it will relieve some of the work that he has and some of the meetings that he has to go to. And I think that the Human Resource Director is here tonight, and he was here at the budget meetings getting his feet wet on that. This is saving money, this is not spending money. We would be spending a lot more money if we hired an Assistant Town Manager. So for those people that think that we're just throwing money out, we're not. I think this is a smart move. If it doesn't work out, well, we'll, you know, I think it will work. I don't have any problems with that.
But I'd like to, I'm sorry- But I'd like to, I'm sorry, are we finished? What I'd like to add is the position of assistant town manager is in existence already. I mean, it's been on the books for quite a few years, and it's remained unfilled, I believe since Mr. Vincent left. Talking about Lee a lot tonight.
He was never assistant town manager?
He was not assistant?
He was assistant two.
Oh, he was assistant two as well?
There has been town assistant town manager, I forget his.
Scott Shanley?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's been, it's, it's in existence, it's, it's been vacant for a long time, and the prior manager looked to have that position filled, and they never filled it. And I think Counselor Morawski is correct, we are saving money because we're not adding a whole new body. We are simply lucky for Mr. Zagami, increasing his responsibilities and giving him a small increase in his pay. So he should be able to handle both positions, we hope, and to take some of the heat off of Mr. Burr and allow both of them to function better and to serve the town.
Just to make clear, you know, a lot of it's so that we can get some other projects done that I haven't had time for, to accomplish more.
And one of those projects that we're all eager to get started is looking into the Balfour Beatty situation, which will help, hopefully.
Which I'll be taking the lead on.
Right. Any other comments? Counselor Franco?
If Mr. Zagami becomes the assistant town manager, and he's taking his HR role also, and it becomes too much, and things are not working out well, is there a plan B?
We'll have to look at it at that point. I have every confidence it'll work out. I mean, we're not filling the old position, you can always go back to that, obviously, but I don't anticipate that that would happen.
So if there were issues and it was, it wasn't working out?
That position still remains there, just not filled.
So if you moved, if he did go back to just being the HR director, would the bonus that he gets for moving up be with?
It would also be, go back to, it'd be, of course, if, depending on how much time goes on, of course, you'd have to make adjustments.
Right, I understand that.
But yes, it'd be on a different pay scale.
We bust them down.
Any other discussion? Counselor Schmidt?
I just wanted to add that this is a position that several town councils in the past have dealt with and have wanted to have the, have an assistant town manager. And finally, we're able to fill that position, and I think that it's been needed and that we'll be very happy once we are, see the results of this.
Seeing no other discussion, we will vote on the updated resolution, twenty eighteen zero zero seven eight, position changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, I go too fast. Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Counselor Parker is abstaining. Thank you, Counselor Parker. All right. We are on to various appointments. Counselor Heath, would you like to do these, or do you want Counselor Atwater?
I'd be happy to do it, because we'd like to move eight, unless you want to move eight. You can move eight if you want. Be my guest. All right. So I would like to move, move eight items all at the same time, two zero one eight dash zero zero seven nine, reappointment of Susan Sayer to zoning commission. Ms. McCauser, how do I read this?
So you'll have to read each one?
Fully, and then just move it as one.
Say each one.
So two zero one eight dash zero zero seven nine, motion to reappoint Susan Sayer to zoning commission. Two zero one eight dash zero zero, zero zero eight zero, motion to reappoint Carol Pratt to retirement board. Two zero one eight dash zero zero eight one, motion to reappoint Michael Kane to planning commission. Two zero one eight dash zero zero eight two, motion, appointment of Joseph Brill to Neighborhood Revitalization Zone Committee. Two, two zero one eight dash zero zero eight three, a motion to appoint Cynthia Brill to Neighborhood Revitalization Zone Committee. Two zero one eight zero zero eight four, motion to appoint Carl Strand III to the library board. Two zero one eight zero zero eight five, motion to appoint Marilyn Comrie to the library board. And motion two zero one eight zero zero eight six, appointment of Dominic Bassett to Parks and Recreation Commission. I so move.
I second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Atwater. Is there any discussion on the appointments to the various boards and commissions? Okay, so I'll call for a vote on items twenty eighteen zero zero seven nine through zero zero eight six, appointments to various commissions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Item from number 10, other business.
Can we ever invite these people in to be interviewed?
Yes, the personnel committee interviews them. Well, most, not everybody is required to.
After the, after the, can we ever say, come on in and say hello, so everybody knows who you are?
Not to the town council, I don't believe. We have them in, and at least meet the personnel committee.
They come before the first, they come before the personnel committee to be interviewed, and then the committee either recommends or doesn't recommend, but we, we trust the judgment of the personnel committee, yes.
It's not a bad idea. The question Leanne's asking, or Counselor Obray is asking, if they would come before the town council. And we sometimes have a challenge getting them to come before the personnel committee because they have a lot of meetings and they're volunteering their time. So it isn't that we don't want them to, it's that.
If we could extend an invitation sometime and just thank them for being good citizens, and giving them their time. What's that?
You can see all of those, you went to their meetings.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely, give me a list.
Any other business?
We could, it's point taken, and I'll, I'll mention it to them, I'll invite them to the council meeting.
Well, years, years ago, the clerk used to have one evening where you would recognize all the volunteers in the community, and that was a nice evening. You'd have everybody from the boards and commissions come out, and the senior center, and you'd just kind of have a nice little night to thank them for their service. So if that's something you'd like to do, perhaps we can keep that in mind for after budget.
Want to cook?
Okay. If there's no other business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Morawski. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we are adjourned at eight thirty.